All right, great. Good evening and welcome to the Hanson Select Board Meeting of November 12th, 2024. This meeting is being recorded by Whitman Hanson Community Access Television. Please rise and join me in the virtual allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic of America, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right. We have a varied and wonderful agenda, but before we get to that, Mr. Hill, may I prevail upon you. Well, first, I wanted to read a little, take a moment of silence for former Hanson Fire Chief Alan Hoyt. Reverend Alan P. Hoyt, 70, resident of Milford, New Hampshire, died at his home on Sunday, November 3rd, 2024. He was born on May 7th, 1954, in Brockton, Mass., a son of the late Francis and Shirley Perkins Hoyt. A graduate of West Bridgewater High School, he joined the West Bridgewater Fire Department as a volunteer firefighter and then enlisted in the Navy and served as a corpsman in Vietnam. Following his military service, he began a lengthy career as an EMT and firefighter with the towns of Plymouth and Hanson, earning a degree in fire science from Cape Cod Community College and ultimately retiring as fire chief from Hanson Fire Rescue. He then earned two degrees in divinity from Andover Newton Theological School and was ordained as a UCC pastor, serving the town of Milford, New Hampshire, at the First Congregational Church, UCC of Milford. Al was a former Boy Scout, an active Freemason with the DeWitt Clinton Masonic Lodge of Sandwich and the Benevolent Lodge, Number 7 of Milford, a drum major with the Highland Light Scottish Pipe Band, and heavily involved with several charitable organizations. He enjoyed a multitude of hobbies and interests outside of his careers. He will be remembered for his deep love of family and friends, his incredible sense of humor, and his life dedicated to civil service. Al is survived by his loving wife, Verna Ross Hoyt, his daughter Jackie Pickering, Tim's son Jason Hoyt, Natalie, daughter Kristen Smith, Christopher, eight grandchildren, two brothers, and one sister. In accordance with his wishes, there will be no calling hours held, a memorial service will be held at a later date. What a wonderful man, and we're so fortunate that he served our community and he left quite a legacy. So please join me in a moment of silence. Thank you very much. Mr. Hill, may I prevail upon you for public announcements?
Yes, very short compared to pre-election. We're looking for citizens at large to become members of the following committees: Bylaw Committee, Cable and Internet Committee, Economic Development Committee, Energy Committee, Historical Commission, Recreational Committee, Memorial Day and Patriotic Observance Committee, and the Zoning Board of Appeals. Volunteer applications may be found at the town website at www.hanson-mass.gov or by calling the Select Board Office at 71-293-2131 and the following upcoming Select Board Meetings on November 19th, December 3rd, and December 10th. Thank you.
All right, thanks very much. First on our agenda is the South Shore Vocational School Debt Exclusion Discussion, but before we do that, in the interest of time, I thought we might take something a little bit out of order and take our second item, which was present Keith Demers, candidate for Assistant Assessor. So, hello, I don't have my glasses on, but I'm assuming you're...
You want to talk?
Yeah, that'd be great, thank you. Good evening, thanks for joining us.
Thanks for being here.
So we have your resume, and Denise, did you want to...
Yes. So I'd like to introduce to the Select Board Mr. Keith Dean Demers, and he is our candidate for Assistant Assessor. The Board of Assessors and myself have recommended him, and we're excited to have him. He is his experience and his prior jobs is a great fit for our department and for the position that he's going into, so I feel very confident and we're very excited to present Mr. Dean.
Thank you.
Denise Demers, I'm sorry, you keep saying Denise, it's Denise Demers.
And now I will mispronounce it for the remainder of this time here, because whenever I want to pronounce something the right way, I go the opposite way. So you've got quite a great resume. Why the interest in changing from, you know, private sector to public sector?
Yeah, it's a variety of things. So I've been financial services, project management, business analysis for the last long, long period of time. I'm looking for really a change of pace. I think something that doesn't require, you know, the work on the weekends, something that I can bring to the table, the skills and the aptitudes that I've developed over time and leverage them here. I'm a people person, for example. I'm very interested in getting out in the field, meeting the citizens of the residents here of Hanson and doing some good for the benefit of the people and of the town.
Okay. And yes, I understand, because I come from a similar background to you. I understand the hours and the commitment. Did anybody have any questions? Denise, did you want to tell us anything or, you know?
No, just I know that he's going to be a great fit. His skills would excel beyond mine probably. I feel like he, just knowing him, meeting him as I have, he's definitely a people person, a kind soul. I really feel like his, you know, being able to multitask in his prior jobs and from what I've heard, all the good things I've heard, I did do reference checks on him, and his prior employers would take him back in a heartbeat. It was a change of life plan, all good things. Excellent worker for them, multitasker, took on many things, even his personal references. He's in many of the veterans associations. He kind of like is a, they said that he kind of works with all of them, and he manages a lot of meetings and just goes beyond really. I'm very happy to feel fortunate to be able to be able to take them on and have them...
And you'll be learning from the best who learn from the best. You've got quite a legacy there, and they've been board of assessors, so, and I'm sure that there'll be classes and what have you that you'll have him.
I'm eager to learn.
Yep, yeah.
Excited about it. You know, he'll be in the field, he's very excited about that and makes me very happy, and I'll be showing him along to how we do things and how the values, how we change values, what happens out there with everybody and the properties in the town and, yeah.
All right. Did anybody have any questions? Or Ms. Green, did you have anything that you wanted to add?
I was just, I was fortunate to meet with Mr. Demers today. We talked basically about backgrounds and things like that, and I understand, working in Boston for eight years, so I understand, you know, looking for the change of pace, definitely. I'm excited to have him on. I'm excited, I'm happy for Denise that she has found such a wonderful candidate, and I think he's going to be a great fit here in the town of Hanson.
And what is the effective date?
He will be joining us next Wednesday, November 20th. We've got the, you know, basically with his position, we do a basic background check. So all the forms are in place, ready to go as soon as the board decides to go that direction.
Okay. I will entertain a motion if no...
Do you live in...
Oh, Dave, sorry.
I live in Marshfield. Yep, so it's seven miles.
I know where you were going with that. He was going to try to recruit you to the American Legion.
Oh, I love that. So I helped with the American Legion, people out, over in the Marshfield, and the Suns. I work, I'm the VFW auxiliary, local level, district level. I work closely, and I work with the Elks, I run a lot of veterans aspects, patriotic essays and whatnot, so thank you for your service as well, daily, but every day counts.
Great. Okay, so I will entertain a motion to hire Keith Demers?
Demers.
Demers? I told you I would...
Thanks, Ian.
Okay, and I apologize in advance for the hundred times I'll mispronounce it. Effective November 20th, pending a successful background check.
Second.
Okay. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, welcome on board, we're thrilled to have you.
I'm happy to...
Thank you. I haven't seen Denise beaming like this for a while, so, yeah. All right, great. And then that brings us to the South Shore, oh, sorry. Okay, okay. That brings us to the South Shore Vocational School Debt Exclusion Discussion. Mr. Hickey, may we prevail, Superintendent Hickey, may we prevail upon you to be in our, what we'd lovingly call our acquisition table?
Mr. Hickey?
Okay, and Ms. Green, did you want to queue this up for us?
Basically, this is just a very preliminary discussion, just, I believe, just to kind of introduce the topic. As we know, the town will be going to a ballot vote on January 25th, and once that ballot goes through, the town will move forward with how to pay for the addition of the school, the new school, basically. So this is really a preliminary discussion, just for Superintendent Hickey, just to kind of give us a timeline and, you know, just an introduction.
Okay, great.
Sure, so thanks, Lisa, that does frame it in nicely. So there's a district-wide, it's a special district election, it's the same ballot question that will be at polling places in all nine of our district towns. The question itself is not a debt exclusion, it's not an override, it's merely the question of, do the voters in the nine towns support the project or not? So it's a yes or no vote. If the project passes, then each community has its own, takes its own path to figuring out, the project has been approved by an aggregate vote of the nine towns, how is our community going to pay for it? I can say without a stretch that, if not all, then nearly all of our communities will go a path for a debt exclusion, because you cannot fit a school building project under levy limits. But that timing and decision-making is entirely not anything that we would become involved in. But I think that the general sense I'm getting from our district towns is that most will seek their, if the project passes, January 25th, that the most popular choice would be to go and ask voters at the spring, a spring 2025 ballot question. The way in which the borrowing will take place is something we're working on right now, but I've done presentations for a while where I've generally said that the bonds would likely roll on at their high watermark in fiscal 2030 or fiscal 2031. So, for instance, and seeing numbers on paper will help better than what I'm cherry picking here, but we're looking at some cash flow numbers where in the first fiscal year that this project rolls on, we would probably borrow about $11 million, and we would pay about $350,000 of interest. So when I'm coming to FinCom, when I'm coming to towns to talk about the fiscal '26 budget, there'll be a line in Hanson's assessment that will say about 12% of 350 grand will be the fiscal '26 installment. It will go up like an escalator from there, of course, with fiscals '26 and '27 being relatively modest, and like I said, the high watermark would be for fiscal '30, maybe fiscal, maybe fiscal '31. So in any event, that's really, that's really the timeline. It really depends on, is the project approved? And then if it is, towns will then take a look and say where to go from here. I know from trying to walk in other shoes that the first, most important question is, what will be the impact in fiscal '26? Because the vote and then the start of the next fiscal year, very narrow. Every one of our communities has competing capital projects, override conversations happening, so it will be good, I'm hoping that by the end of this month, we will have a projection of tax impact. So when I talk about it rolling on over four or five years, we'll put some numbers behind that so folks can see. But ultimately, where the MSBA approved our project at the end of October, the project at the local level will be about $164 million, and that will be divided between eight, between nine towns. And what we're watching as part of our projection is also that we've added a ninth town. Marshfield, in its inaugural year, has added 30-plus students to the building, so they're at about 5.5% of the building. And so what I can explain to you in more detail at another time, if you'd like to have me back, is how does that increasing enrollment of a new town help to offset? What I said casually is I would expect Marshall to be about 15 or 16% of the share by fiscal '30. And that's simply, and that's relatively an easy projection, because we would be the same-sized school until the '28, '29 school year. So it's relatively easy to say, well, if there's the same demand and they send the same number of kids, they'll take a larger share of what is, you know, like a maxed-out pool of available students to come in the building.
As those populations of students shift from town to town, what does that do to the amount that the town needs to pay for the debt exclusion specifically?
Sure, sure. So on October 7th, the residents of Hanson approved our regional agreement amendment, and if it is approved in our other communities later on this fall, I have three town meetings this month, and then the rest are in December, we would use a four-year, a four-year lookback on enrollment.
Okay.
So I can, when we put out our numbers, one of the things that I'm looking at carefully is to separate fact from projection. I can factually tell every town what their share would be in fiscal '26 and '27, because we have those enrollment numbers in the can. Fiscal '28 and beyond, it becomes like, you know, the 10-day weather forecast, and it looks like it's partly sunny in 10 days, and so the, you know, the margin of error might be greater, but I do feel comfortable saying that Hanson is one of four communities out of the nine who consistently wants to enroll more children than there are available seats. So I can look at that, I can look at available unused seats and make some reasonable projections. I think right now, and I'll correct myself if I get better information, but we're probably looking at a 10.5% share. That's my feeling right now with several assumptions. If all the towns that we have stay in their lane, meaning the under-enrolled towns continue to not use all their seats, there are a handful of communities that almost use all their seats, and then, of course, there are four communities that have historically had a greater demand than there are seats. So we're going to have to make some projections, there'll be like 700 asterisks, and along with, you know, what's your borrowing plan, and what's your interest rate, what projections are you using? But we're going to lay it all out on one piece of paper and then let people begin to digest it as we make our way from now until January 25th.
Okay. Did anybody have any questions?
Have to sit and wait for the...
Yes, Mr. Weeks.
Wait for the next ball of the fall.
Yes, what's the impact going to be at the worst and when?
Right.
How much? And what's the tax rate? Absolutely, all of that will absolutely be unpacked. It's the ultimate question people have.
So I think, you had mentioned this, I'm almost positive you mentioned this in the past, but just refresh my memory if you could. So what happens at the ballot if some of the towns don't approve the plan, but a majority do approve the plan?
Certainly, Joe, it's a district-wide election, so it's treated as one entity, like we're electing congressperson or something, you know, it's, so it could lose in one town, win in another, but it's, so it's not town-specific. It'll be, and so the means by which a special district election is held, and I've learned a lot in this process, a special district election is in-person or absentee ballot. So there's not even an option for communities to opt into what you would use for perhaps your municipal election for mail-in or anything like that. So it's in-person, so the clerks collectively said, January 25th, 9:00 AM to 5:00 PM, we are responsible, the school district is responsible for the warrant, for the posting and a newspaper publication, for postings around town. So we'll own the work that is generally something that comes through local select boards or town clerks, that's on us to take care of. Our school board will vote the warrant officially on November 20th, and then we'll just follow the rules from there.
So second follow-up question, then, related. So let's say it gets passed, assuming it's based off popular vote, so as long as the majority of all those, is a majority is yes, it goes, but a town meeting where the funding happens, what if it's hypothetical, what if the same towns that didn't want it, for whatever reason, also vote to not fund it at their town meetings or at the ballot?
And that's probably the best question that could be asked at this early stage, because it's very, it would be very important for me to make clear that if the project is approved, then each community is obligated. So the messaging will have to be clear to residents in any community. If there's a municipal debt exclusion and the debt exclusion fails, the project dies. In our case, kind of like with our annual budget, if we get 2/3 of the towns to say yes to their assessments respectively, then all communities are obligated. So the messaging for the debt exclusion involving our project, if it, obviously, it's a moot point if it doesn't pass, but if it passes, the point would be, okay, the debt exclusion, we're on the hook for it, are we going to exclude it under the levy?
Right.
And in some cases, you know, sometimes communities have to look at the matter more than once, but that is what you'll hear from your town's financial leadership team will be, I'm pretty sure, that message, which is, if a debt exclusion isn't approved, then we'd likely have to come back and revisit it, because nothing, the money's not coming off the tree to cover it.
Right, okay.
So, yeah, so if this passes as a majority, then it is up to each town individually to figure out how they're going to fund that.
Exactly.
If a debt exclusion doesn't pass in Hanson, then we have to figure out how else we would fund it if we don't revisit the debt exclusion.
Right, so the exposure might be that in the fiscal '26 budget, that 12% of the three, you know, the $40-something thousand for fiscal '26, that would be, that cost would be an exposure to the town that wouldn't be excluded, where the, a spring '25 ballot debt exclusion question not to pass.
Yep.
And so maybe in that one year, okay, but eventually...
Yeah, it's going to go on.
Yeah.
I appreciate it.
And this board, this board, as a Hanson resident myself, I appreciate as a citizen what you do and how much you emphasize wanting to educate people about all matter of extraordinary tax impacts on folks in our town, so I understand why you would ask these questions here as well.
Thank you.
Mr. Hill?
I know you've done a few small presentations like this one to us a couple times, or similar ones, and to smaller groups. Are you planning on doing larger presentations to residents of Hanson, or maybe the whole, everybody at once?
Yes.
How do you plan on getting this out to the people?
Yes, so I am, I'm operating with the premise that it's an all-of-the-above approach. So I am trying to meet with groups, civic groups who gather. I'll be at the Hanson, I'll be at Indian Head this week on the 14th, a meeting with, meeting with parents and middle school parents are invited, and then I'll be at the Rod and Gun Club right after that. So I'm in Hanson twice more this week. But we have to also go online as well. So our approach with our project team is, go where folks gather, in-person conversations, allow for a more authentic back and forth, but at some point, you have to also look to online hybrid options. So a public forum in this room at some point, avoiding the holidays and trying to find a sweet spot, either the second week of December or right after we're all back from New Year's would be ideal, and that would be, that would be my intention. But I am always open to advice that if there are groups in town, that I'll be the first person to call them and say, would you like to hear more about our project?
Do you have other, are there any other towns that want to join? I know you said nine, I know Marshfield's new, isn't there somebody else too?
Yeah, you might pick up a vibe here and there that the town of Pembroke is interested. They formed a regional planning committee at a previous town meeting, and I've had a few meetings with that committee. I think there is, again, insert the same story, competing capital demands. If I were to forecast that, if our project were to pass, I think they would officially approach us, but they would first go to their own voters and say, hey, we're about to ask to join the Voc Tech, are you all on board with paying for what it would cost to be brought into the district?
So one of the reasons I'm asking this is I see that there's going to be a great increase in the number of students that are going to want to have a hands-on trade-type education, and I, you, you know, what's the capacity? What have you got?
So we are currently maxed out at 685 students. This building we're proposing will be designed for 900, so, but I'm very, I absolutely agree with every word you're saying, we have a 100-student waiting list.
Right.
But I also know bringing on more roommates helps to pay the bills.
Well, I know, but how many roommates can you bring?
I think we could bring on a 10th, and I, because here's the other point I make very quickly but carefully. We'll design it for 900, but we cannot outpace what our towns can afford for an operating budget. So we cannot say, oh, look, we're going to bring in, we're going to, look, they built it, so they'll come. Well, not if the budget says, I can't hire three more bus drivers, two more custodians, and six teachers. So, but we will pace it appropriately, and state aid should follow increasing enrollment. There is a demand. I've been at the school for 30 years, there has never been more of a demand than what we're seeing right now. And this also offers us an opportunity, as I see it, for future partnerships with our K to 12 school districts, because I think there are models out there that could have part-time vocational education.
Wouldn't it be nice if we had, you know, home ec and wood shop?
We used to have that.
That's what we have.
Yeah, we have, I have metal shop.
And there may be, there may be kids that don't come to our school but who could benefit from a dose of this training. So there'll be many opportunities that I can see in the future, but is the demand there? It certainly is. But again, for another town to join, we follow the same process that we did in 2023 when we brought in Marshfield. We go to each town meeting, we have a regional agreement amendment, here are the terms and conditions, do 2/3 of the towns agree? And that would take a couple, that would take a couple of years. So perhaps another town by the time something was going to open, maybe the year before, getting ahead of myself, but...
I wasn't thinking of sharing the pot, I was thinking of the potential growth that, you know, just...
I think we have, we, the MSBA allowed us to study anywhere up to 975 students. We went with 900 because we didn't feel as though the site we have could reasonably over a long term sustain that. When designers build a building, they leave a factor for additional growth, so they build it to 85% capacity. So it is on paper possible you could have, you could have more. That certainly won't be overnight, though.
Okay. Any questions? Any other questions? All right, as usual, extremely thorough and extremely informative, we appreciate it.
Happy to come back in between other events if you'd like updates, and there will be forums, we'll be blasting out there.
What day do you go to Gun Club? You go to their meeting, Tuesday?
Today's Tuesday, right, or, yeah, Thursday, the 14th, yeah. So I'm at the middle school, I'm at the Indian Head for 6:30, and then I'll be there at the tail end of their meeting, probably by 7:15, 7:30, yeah. So bring some flyers and tell them what the project's about.
Awesome, thank you so much.
Okay, thanks, everybody.
All right, that brings us to Town Account and Update, Mr. Kent Sherf.
I'm just going to give you guys a, you know, quick little update, starts the town account goes. We're kind of working in, like, thinking about three fiscal years right now. FY '24, which was the last fiscal year, you know, we ended up getting our free cash certified and so forth. We're going to have our audit this come in at the end of November, auditing our books, and then we got the Schedule A, that's what we're doing in the accounting office. And then this current year, FY 2025, you guys are going to probably be having a reclass hearing for the tax rate, to work on the tax rate recap, you know, ended up hosting all special town meeting, and FY '25, you know, we're going to just continue to monitor the revenues and expenses to see, you know, how we're doing compared to our estimates and so forth. And then, I'll just go on broad picture, then we get the fun stuff of the FY 2026 budget. Instead of going crazy, you know, wrapping myself around an asshole trying to project out, you know, we're planning on getting those budgets in in December, so we'll be able to compile them at the end of December, we'll see what the requests are, we'll see what the revenues are, and then we'll see where we're at and see what we need to do. Basically, you know, the budget constraints have basically revolved around, you know, revenues at 3%, expenses like 6% to 7%, that's like the squeeze, you know, so that's it. So it's all about funding the increases.
And what are you projecting on for the school, because that's the elephant?
I'm projecting like 7% because just from all the towns that I work with, too, basically the state wants to twist the elements of like towns like Hanson, they want us to pay more. So the way they make us pay more is they give the school districts less in cherry-sheade, they give them normal amounts, and by default, that throws the extra burden on the towns. So, I mean, that's basically, kind of, that's basically what's, you know, what's happening. So because we get extra assessments every year and so forth, that's by design, because basically they look at like the wealth levels, the community said, hey, these residents can pay more, so we can pay less. the community said, hey, these residents can pay more, so we can pay less as a state. So that's, I mean, that's, that's basically, you know, the actual stuff. So, so that, that's kind of, you know, where I'm at. Now, I'd rather be realistic, because I think last year we got into a game of, I wanna say it was almost a game of chicken, like, we're gonna go five percent, that's all we can afford, and going back.
It was all we could afford.
Yeah, and we, and we'll see, and basically, you as a board are gonna have to, we'll make recommendations, but you as a board are gonna have to make decisions. When we come into, like, the shore balls and stuff, you're gonna have to make decisions. You're gonna have to say, like, all right, do we, obviously, the easy answer is, but, easy answer is not easy, but like, math-wise, oh, let's just do an override, that's, but, you know, sometimes that's not realistic, or sometimes that doesn't happen. So then you're gonna have to make decisions on, you know, emptying out the cupboard of the reserves versus budget cuts and so forth like that. So we'll, we'll see, but I don't wanna go too far down that road until we actually look at things, you know, where they're at. So, but, I can segue you on to some, like, good, great news, good news, because I, you guys look a little dour after I said that.
I mean...
So, and the good news is that we actually have some unexpended offer money that, you know, Lisa must have felt good to say, like, went to, you know, solicited the department to say, we have some extra money, we have some projects and so forth that you might be interested in, and...
Well, just to clarify, this was money because of, of certain things that we couldn't do with the money. Like, we had committed a lot of this, but, but then there were things that either we couldn't do, or they got funded in a different way. So I don't, I don't want...
No, this was, this was additional money that we had, that we did not know about until Plymouth County reached out and gave us an exact amount of how much we had, and as well as with the treasury money, too.
Well, yeah.
So...
That's like two, yeah, that's like two different buckets, too. So, but this is the money that the actual town received, and I think what happened was, I think we had some money set aside for, like, library feasibility, seventy-five thousand, and some of those projects that were approved in the past didn't come to fruition. And what's driving this is by December thirty-first, twenty-twenty-four, you have to have the money spent, or at least a contract to spend.
Committed, I think they said.
Yeah, committed. So we basically have, I don't know, Lisa, would the, the staff want to get this?
Yes.
Yeah, yeah. So basically, we have about three hundred and fifty thousand uncommitted money with some suggestions of some projects that kind of been vetted out with Lisa and the department heads.
So can we just kind of go through, so...
You know, so they should look at this one.
Oh, okay, wait a minute. Apparently, there's multiple versions here.
This is the older one.
Wasn't in my pack.
Question, while you're doing that?
Yeah.
So, Eric?
Oh, Lisa's, oh.
So we had, let's just say three fifty.
Thanks, Ed.
We had three hundred and fifty thousand dollars obligated to projects that didn't come to fruition?
Basically, yes.
Okay, so I guess my, my big question is, you know, what happens to those projects? So we don't have to, so the, the projects are just dead? We, they're, they're things that we can't do, or are these projects that we're gonna have to fund some other way because we're half-obligated?
No, for instance, the library project because of the...
I understand that one project. I'm talking about all, all three hundred and fifty thousand.
Maybe Lisa can go through there with you.
Yeah. So, so because they, they were not, they didn't come to fruition, they're just not gonna happen?
So one of them was the generator that actually ARPA rejected the application for.
Right.
So that was one.
So we gotta be clear, there's two different types of ARPA, because we're gonna talk about the generator later.
So, all right, so the ARPA, so under the Plymouth County, we did put in an application for the, for the generator, for the senior center and for the library.
Yeah.
And unfortunately, they denied that application for a generator. They didn't approve it. We also, the library had also requested two hundred thousand in a new HVAC system, and Charlie Baker was able to call in a company that was able to maintain and service the current HVAC system that basically gave us at least three to five additional years of life, just by maintaining those, those HVAC systems.
Okay.
So that opened up two hundred thousand on that area, but then the library took a hundred and fifty of that, and through town meeting, set aside that money if they were to receive the grant for the building. But unfortunately, because we are not eligible for that grant, that opens up that hundred and fifty thousand. So there was at least two hundred thousand. The rest of the, the other hundred and fifty... Was some of it in Pratt Place? Didn't we get some state... Yeah, so Pratt Place is all, all of that money for Pratt Place has been, has been approved for... It came in under. It came in under, yes, yes. It did come in under, and that's why we have some additional projects here for that.
Okay.
Okay, so, did, did you wanna walk through?
Oh, yeah, yeah, absolutely.
Or, I don't know, Eric, if you, I don't know who wants to take the lead.
I mean, I can...
Okay, good, you go ahead.
Yeah.
I mean, so, so the shady areas, the ones that may be approved, like ninety-six hundred dollars to John, your Hoyle Public Relations Firm. Maybe I'll read them off, and then, then if there's questions. Highway overtime, ten thousand. Select ward staff stipends, sixty-five hundred. Then there's the assessors near map software, eighty-eight hundred. Police replace battery backup for computers, twenty-six thousand, seven fifty. New motorcycle for the police, twenty-six thousand, nine hundred. A police smart board for their training room, five thousand, three sixty, thirty-four. Town hall repairs, concrete walkway and handicap only up, fifty-six hundred dollars. Then there's fire radios, it says nine, deck I reduced to five, so we can fit some stuff in. That's twenty-five thousand. I think the fire chief's here today. That one that says police agreeing, tend to email, that, that was my note, that should say police cruisers.
Okay.
That's sorry, well, sadly.
That raises a couple of questions.
Don't worry.
Yeah.
So that was police cruisers, because the reason I couldn't get a recent confirmation of how much it was gonna cost, that's, that's why they got that. And then there's, yeah, storm water management for the highway department, thirty thousand.
Could we just put a pin in there? What, what exactly are they gonna be doing with that money for storm water management?
So that money is for environmental partners to review the bylaws and update the bylaws regarding storm water.
Okay. Okay, and, okay, I think that we were going to apply for a grant for that, but we can't any longer. I think Mr. DeFray has had a grant that he was looking at for that. Okay. And then highway office improvements, what are we talking about there?
So there are a lot of areas in the highway office building that are very rundown and dilapidated. So they will be repairing, like, some of the flooring, replacing some of the cabinets that don't work any longer in the highway department. There is some carpeting in there that is, really needs to be ripped up and replaced with some new flooring. So it's gonna be basically repairs to that office area in the kitchen area.
Okay. And then portable generator additional funds, can we talk about that? So I know that at town meeting, we did appropriate money for a generator specifically for the library and senior center, so that they would have a heating and cooling area during, you know, any kind of a climate issue. And, you know, I think I even said it at the town meeting, we sneeze and lose electricity, it's ridiculous. I think people lost electricity this, last weekend in various parts of town. So I, I think everybody agreed we needed the generator, and I know, Chief O'Brien, you spoke to me about a portable generator. I will say I've gotten a couple of calls from the folks at the library and the senior center, who said town meeting appropriated this money for the library and the senior center, which was a good point. And then I think the other, and I think when you and I had discussed it, you had said, look, this would give us more versatility with the generator, we could move it around. But then it gets into some questions about who decides who the priority is.
So that, that would actually be fairly simple. So if the police, the police station, between the police station and well field, those are the priorities in town. So what we found out when we, I don't know, it was about a year ago, town meeting approved for the well field, the police station, the fire station, they have external hookups put on the buildings.
Yeah.
And when they came to, when we went to load test the first time, we found out that all the generators that are in this region will not do the well field, and will not do the police station, because their loads are greater than what I have at the fire station. So we needed a minimum of a hundred and twenty-five kilowatt generator. So we were told by the company that came in to do all the work on it. So this came up when Charlie Baker and I were standing at the fire station, we started talking to the gentleman that was doing the load testing, because we had to go down to Barnstable County, and from Barnstable County borrow their generator from their Homeland Security cache. And that's when all of a sudden it hit us, and it should have hit us six months ago, that in, instead of having one set generator for the library senior center, to get one that's portable, because if the police station goes down, the fire station goes down, town hall goes down, now I believe the library senior center goes down. So anybody that's got the phone, the new phone systems, it's all based out of the police station. All of our IT stuff for the majority of the town is based out of the police station. So anytime they go down, we lose everything at the fire station. That is why we actually went to the external hookups a year ago, because about a year and a half ago, the police station lost power due to a car accident, and their primary generator would not start. So we were without everything for an hour, maybe two at the most. So with that being said, if the police station goes down, they would be the primary. However, I will tell you, if the well fields go down and we need a generator, we need water, but it's roughly about a day, talking with the water department, that we can go without the wells actually being up, because they're able to, the tank holds about a million gallons, they use roughly seven hundred to a million gallons a day, depending on time of year. With the library senior center, if all the other buildings are up, then obviously they would be the priority. It gets turned on, they're hooked up, they're all set to go. But we wouldn't even have a warming or cooling center there. If the fire station's down, the police station's down, or the well field's down.
A couple, a couple thoughts, though.
Oh, go ahead, absolutely.
So town meeting specifically voted for that to be the senior center in the library. The other thing I wanna say is, water has their own money.
They do, absolutely.
So I, I'm sorry, I really hate to be that way, but they've got their own money that they control. That's what we pay our water bills for. And I think that if they need a generator, then they ought to make the case for a generator out of water.
So they, they, so let me just stop. All these buildings do have primary generators, but I don't know how old the one is for the well field, I don't know. The one at the fire station, it's an old one, it's been there as long as I have been, actually longer than I've been there. However, I would not change it, because in my opinion, it's bulletproof. But if it did fail, I am down until I get a generator brought in. And at least for the fire station, maybe I can get one out of Bridgewater, but maybe not.
I guess what I, what I guess...
And I understand, let me just finish one second. And I totally understand town meeting, because town meeting did vote on it. And that was a discussion that Charlie Baker and I and some of the others, the department heads had, is we know town meeting had voted for a generator for the library senior center, but what, what I personally was looking at is trying to be more feasible, because as we all know, money is tight. So if we're able to get one generator that, while it is the library senior center, that would be the primary one, that's where it's housed, that's where it's used. If during a major storm, the police station goes down, Charlie Baker or somebody else can go the library senior center, take it, tow it there, hook up their stuff. So that was the thought. And I get that there's probably legal issues and things like that with it.
I wouldn't have to take it back to town meeting, there's no question about that.
So that was our thought behind it, but ultimately, it's up to you guys to decide.
So you're saying it would be a similar generator, but it'd just be portable instead of...
Correct, it'd be on trailer.
It would, it would be the library's generator, but...
Not really.
On wheels.
You could call it under emergency management if you wanted to, is how we were looking at it.
So you would have to.
Yeah. So that was our thought, because otherwise, what we're looking at is either we need to start looking for a, right now, in today's price, an eighty thousand dollar generator today, or if the police station does go down, then hope that Barnstable County is not using theirs, and go down to Hyannis and pick it up.
Does the generator that's at the police station right now, does that, if it was up and running right at the moment, will it handle the police?
It will handle the police station, yes.
Then, I mean, is it a diesel generator?
It's a diesel generator.
Should outlast us.
It should, but like I said, we had that one instance, and maybe it's only a one-off, but I have had a fire station prior to being the fire chief, on two occasions that ours went down, and had to wait, during a storm, it had to wait for the generator company to come in and fix whatever it was on. So, I mean, it's one of those things, because they're not used all the time.
And but don't they...
There are maintenance issues.
Don't they get run every week?
They do start every week, yeah, but the, the town hall just had it in the last year, that the generator went down, and they had an employee stuck in the elevator. So, I mean, that's the thing, even with the newer technologies, I like the old generator, but, and again, this was an idea that we floated out. It's okay if people don't wanna do it, or for legal reasons, we can't, but again, just trying to, I, it is my job, is emergency management, right, and that's what I'm looking at it as, is just trying to come up with some viable options, is to try, do a little bit, try to do the most with the little bit that we've got.
So this thirty thousand dollars is gonna get a bigger generator than what we...
So the town meeting appropriated ninety-one thousand dollars, and so this would be the additional cost, because to have a towable unit, the one we're looking at is approximately eighty thousand dollars. Then you've gotta do the transfer switch to the library senior center, plus all the stuff to go with it.
But in the meantime, is the one that kept the police station up and running?
Oh, no, all the generators are up and running. This is, this is, this is an emergency backup in case anything could go down.
If maintenance is done on them, and they're run and they're exercised, I mean, this, I've worked in buildings that are fifty, sixty years old that have the original diesel generator in the building.
Well, I agree, and the one at the fire station, I think is better than the one that exists in the other two buildings, but all three have gone down.
Right.
When you want them to, it's just, it's that perfect storm that seems to happen.
Oh, exactly, yep.
Yeah.
What's the price difference between what you're asking for and what the senior center is asking for? The reason I'm asking is, can we...
Thirty thousand dollars, that's the difference.
Yeah, that's why...
Because we could order a, get the senior center one for the senior center price that happens to be portable.
That's the thing to do, and that's why we originally went down that road.
Until we voted to change it.
So...
What are you saying again?
I'm saying that we buy one for the senior center, if we, if it wasn't a thirty thousand dollar difference. I'm saying we would buy it for the senior center. It's portable, but it's the senior center, and then we could go back to town meeting at a later date and say, we would like to do the transfer panels and all the rest, so that it can be used at these other buildings.
The only time you ever commandeered is only if police went down or you went down.
Correct.
You wouldn't commandeer it if you didn't need it.
No, we wouldn't, exactly.
If we lost power and your generator was down.
Correct.
Okay.
And that, that's what we're looking at for it.
So what, what were you saying?
So the additional, so the generator itself is roughly eighty thousand dollars, and it's roughly another eleven, so it's roughly another forty-one thousand dollars to do the transfer switch at the library senior center and put the external hookups for the generator in.
At the other locations?
Nope, only at the, only at the library senior center.
Okay.
The police station, fire stations, even the well fields are, we, we can accept generators.
They have the right transfer switch for the generator, your proposal?
Yep, so, yes. So this is all about, honestly, it's all about the library senior center for them, for it, because right now, the generator that town meeting approved is, just like we have here at town hall, it's a fixed unit, stays on the ground, their power goes off, then it should kick on. And what we were proposing, again, just some outside-the-box thinking on it, was to do a portable one, but what it changes is, is now you've gotta add the external piece to the building, which is what town meeting did for the, mainly police and fire, but also well field, they paid for their own, which was an additional fifteen, right?
All right, but so, so if the generator was going to be at the senior center and the library, but simply made, in my mind, mobile, okay, optionally mobile.
Correct.
Then, you are still saying that type of unit, and then the additional work for the transfer switch does add some money to it. Remind me if, is the thirty thousand gonna be enough? Because I just heard you say forty-one thousand.
Because you already got eleven thousand dollars, so the ninety-one thousand left. Because the generator to, the towable unit is roughly eighty thousand dollars, then you got eleven thousand left, but it's like forty thousand to do everything there.
So really, what we're talking about is still a generator for the senior center and the library, just a different type of generator.
Correct.
Did we get into specificity at town meeting of the type of generator we were going to buy?
No.
Okay.
No, just, basically, what they read, install a jet... No, we just, basically what they read, um, install a generator to be shared with the library and council. They really didn't talk about what?
I do think somebody at town meeting asked how it was going to be powered, somebody did ask that.
And it was brought, somebody did ask that, and I believe the answer was natural gas. This would be a natural gas, this would actually be a diesel generator for it.
Okay.
And again, you may want to consult with town council just to make sure when I?
Yeah, I think we will. I mean, we don't need to take a vote tonight, but what, what, where are people leaning on this?
I, I think it's incredibly smart, but it, for me, it just comes down to what the town voted for versus what they're potentially going to get. So I, I'm kind of wishy-washy on that. I'd like to get, um, I'd like to get the, the library slash senior center's opinion on what they prefer, if they, if they have an opinion on this. But, because the flip side would be true that, you know, for the, for the water tower in particular, if they do believe it's a, it's a good idea, they actually have the extra money to buy a portable one to solve that problem while keeping the integrity of the, of the, of the library senior center there. I mean, they have the funds to actually literally do it. So, so for me, it's, it's kind of like overlapping issues that I'm trying to wade through. Because it, it, it's a really smart idea. I like how creative it is.
I wish we had it six months ago.
Yeah, no, it's just, it just comes down to, you know, the town voted for this. I don't want them to think that they're getting something else that, because it, I really believe in, in the integrity of that vote. And then if, if there's extra money from a department that's advocating for it, we should compel them to, to contribute to that.
I think Robbie's trying to say, like, he's trying to be fair. They didn't, he?
No, I know that.
They didn't come up with this idea, but like they would benefit from it if it went forward. I really do think the line needs to be very bright. Um, I, I don't have a problem with it being senior center, police and fire, if town council thinks that it, but I really think that if the water department needs their own, you know, backup generator, then I, I, you know, obviously in some catastrophic thing we could, but I just would not want to plan on that being the case. Because, uh, you know, then it basically means that all the other departments in town would become subservient to an entity that already has its own money, but didn't pay for this.
No, understood, understood.
But I think that's the thing, is you, you, you kind of said it in what you just said, where it's like, it could be this, it could be there, it could be there. And I trust the intention of, of, of you sitting in front of us because you have integrity. You could win the lottery, move off to the Caribbean, someone else could be here. And if we don't have an ironclad thing, like, I would only really entertain this if we were real, to your point, like really specific that this is not an occasion other people's. This is theirs unless something catastrophic were to happen. And then like, there has to be a super checks and balances because, um?
It's, it very simply, just like what we put before you, Fox have policies which you just have to go into place.
Mm-hmm. I think we could come up with an emergency policy.
And that's exactly what it is, is the only reason that police and fire are going to need it is again, that's last ditch effort. We lost power, our primary generators for some reason went down, and that would be why.
And I, again, I, I, you know, there is some reciprocity amongst all the departments. Like water lends highway things, highway lends water things. There are, but this just is like town meeting specifically had in mind that it was going to be for the senior center and for the library, that it would be a warming and cooling center. That was specifically what we said.
Yep.
Um, so, uh, so let's, let us, where are you guys leaning? Do you want to check with town council?
Just have to go to the firehouse if it's too hot out.
Oh, God, okay.
See, what I'm afraid of is like, let's say there's a, there's a heat wave or something, and then someone gets stuck in the elevator. Then you have two competing things. Do we shut down? Like, who makes the call that we're shutting it down? Because it's easy to make the call now, but once you have the, the, the access to something, unplug it, hook it up and move it, that's what it's like, where, what is it?
So, again, I, I wish we had had this thought prior to us standing there in my parking lot going, oh, why, why didn't we think of this before? It's extremely easy to hook up, that's the nice part about it, is it is five wires that already exist that, um, if somebody was stuck in, town hall does. So here's the one thing, town hall does not have external hookups right now. So if somebody's stuck in the elevator, he has five, but for the police, for the police department, for example, if the police department does go down in the middle of a heat wave, they would be the priority because that is life safety because all of our communications, everything runs through that central hub.
I thought a recall didn't have to have power to get it to come down. It's automatic.
Struggle.
Yes, I do.
They, again.
We don't have to make a decision tonight.
If you lose power, the recall should bring it down and open the doors.
All right, so we don't need to make a decision tonight. I think we should circle back with, um, with our, um, legal counsel, just get an opinion on what, you know, what, how specific that was, um, what our abilities are. That said, we do somewhat need to make a decision since this money needs to be, um, committed um, by the end of the year. Um, so we've kind of got to get, I'm looking at you because basically you need to follow up on this and, okay.
So if we can't do that, can I get my other portable radios? Because that's, I, that's what we did, is I purposely gave up portable radios to be able to fund the generator. So if we can't do the generator, then?
Well, um, so you're horse trading right here?
I am horse trading.
Chief O'Brien.
You know how his horse is.
What's happening?
No, I'm okay, we'll talk later.
I didn't know we were at an auction here. You give me this, I'll give you that. Um, okay, uh, that's the level we've gotten to here, okay. Um, so if you can check on that, and then everybody just sort of think about, um, and I do know where the library stands because I've spoken to Ms. Stouffer and Ms. Cufardo, both of whom are in the library, and, um, they're feeling a little spicy about it. Uh, they're not feeling super?
I can imagine.
Good about it.
Gratefully so.
I haven't talked to Mary Collins, but typically she'd be like, whatever is best for the town. So I doubt she's going to say much, but, you know, um?
My only opinion on it is if, if it's stuck in the ground and can't move, you don't have the option of prioritizing it, the minute you put it on wheels, you can justify moving it.
It's true, but where I kind of go with this is currently, and, and in the prior administration, um, Chief O'Brien is our emergency person, right? So I would assume that with that hat on, he would take a look at the competing priorities and make a decision as the head of emergency response as to what's best for the town. And so, but with the policy in place that we all sort of agreed to. So I hear what you're saying, but I'm, but, you know?
I'm going to respect, I'm going to say this in the most respectful way. Because I do, I try, I do trust you implicitly with everything. The town didn't vote for what's in the best interest of the town. They voted specifically for the senior center and the library.
Which is where it will be.
Right, well, until.
Maybe, we'll see. Well, get legal opinion. If, you know, my only concern is, um, it may be that, yes, that conversation should have happened six months earlier because we may have?
Legally, we may be, we may have to go there, and I understand.
Yes, and, and, and things don't get cheaper, particularly generators, I could tell you that. Uh, they just seem to exponentially climb. Um, so, um, okay, well, anyway.
I think, I think that, um, it was voted on for the senior center.
Yes.
And I think that that has to be really re-litigated because the seniors deserve to be taken care of.
I agree.
Oh, no, absolutely.
If you're around, that's not once in a while.
And it's not just the seniors either, Ian, because I would say, yeah, but I would, so, so the way when, like I was thinking about it, I was thinking, all right, if there's some kind of catastrophic thing and nobody in town has any electricity, at least it'd be able to go charge and heat or, yeah, so.
But my point is, it was the schools, there'd be no discussion.
And I'm wondering, is, um, good point, and I was wondering, um, is this something that you think we need? So it, let's say we land in a place where we say, look, the town council says, look, now the vote, like that was the vote, it was senior center, library, it's pretty cut dry. Is this, it, it, you know, and again, you don't need to answer this tonight, but if it is something that you feel strongly and from an emergency response perspective that we need, then we maybe need to go make the case, you know, that we, we need this. Um, you know, and I, again, I like, I like the ingenuity of your thinking of trying to combine, but it may be that we're not able to do that.
Yeah, I understand that, absolutely, yep. Yeah, like I said, I wish we thought of it six months.
Well, there's a lot of things that we haven't, which we had thought about, but we can't do anything about it.
Yep, exactly.
Um, okay, all right. Um, anybody have any other questions? Okay, all right, um, thanks for that. Now, um, I know we've got this list of things. Are we needing to take a vote?
Oh.
Yes, okay. Um, so we're going to have to put a pin in, in the portable generator additional funds. We'll just kind of, kind of put that to the side.
So it's 319,300.
Yeah, so, exactly. Um, so I will entertain a motion to approve, um, the ARPA funding, uh, for, um, as in the shaded areas that we just went through.
So, second.
Okay, any further discussion?
No.
Okay, all in favor? Okay, great. Um, all right.
Thank you very much.
Well, that was a spicy little conversation. You just never know what's going to get crazy. Um, so, all right, well, thank you for that and thank you. And I hope you really know the, the spirit in which we're like?
No, no, it's all good, no. And, and we do understand that a vote was taken at town meeting, we respect that. Again, it was just timing wise, all of a sudden we're like, well, let's see if, if there's an opportunity to do this. If there is, or isn't, if not, that's okay.
All right.
We want to plan big.
Good idea, keep it, I always thinking of trying to come up, solve some, you know, solve problems. Like, I, I love it, I really do.
Oh, yeah.
Thank you.
You're such a little problem solver, not even little, big and little problem solver.
We're trying.
Both of you guys get problem solving awards. If we had pins, we'd give them to you, but we don't because we're on a tight budget. So, um, all right, thanks, guys.
Thank you.
All right, so that brings us to the Wayback Machine, October Town Meeting, which seems like so long ago.
It was only last month, right?
Well, it was only last month. Um, so recap and next steps. Um, we had the citizens petition, um, from Mr. Malisi. Um, and I believe that we sent the letter that we needed to send out to Brady and Ducoast and I believe Governor Haley.
Governor Haley?
Yeah, I, I just couldn't, um, so that went out. Um, what other follow-ups did we have, um, from that meeting?
Well, we've been working on the generator, getting the quotes, uh, things like that.
What is your opinion on the generator? We didn't ask you that. As town administrator, what is your recommendation?
Well, I think, I think that going with the portable generator helps to solve two problems. The library and the senior center will be the primary location for that generator. So that's where it will be, unless something catastrophic happens. Um, and then it may be moved. But it makes sense to have it mobile rather than there. Um, because we've seen what, what can happen. I mean, when that crazy windstorm hit us a couple of years ago, and basically everywhere, all our neighbors and us suffered 100% electricity loss, cell phone loss, um, even though we had generators here, uh, the generators went on, but systems were still down. So we learned a lot of lessons at that, from that crazy windstorm. So that's just my thought on it. I mean, I agree, um, with the fire chief that it's important for us to have our central network, which would be the police station. If they go down and it's, it's not, you know, it's not, uh, a, a freezing cold wave and it's not a heat wave, why wouldn't we be able to take that generator and bring it over to the police station to get them up and running? And then as soon as that issue is, is resolved, get that generator right back.
All right, so let's see, let's see what town council says about it. Um, and, um, and I know, I, I didn't mention this to Chief O'Brien, but I know he typically does do this. Let's see if there might be some grants, not state, obviously, um, but, um, some federal grants for emergency, you know, response, like a FEMA, you know, type of thing.
Definitely look into, into FEMA.
You know, because he makes a compelling argument. And, and you're right, it would be foolish, uh, given, uh, the amount of electrical outages that we have to not plan for this and make sure that police, fire and water, you know, should be planning as well, um, and senior center and the library and town hall, that we can operate because we're going to need everybody. It's going to have to be boots on the ground when something like that happens. So let's see what we can do to get everybody up and running. Uh, but if you can check with legal counsel.
Yeah, I'll definitely check with Kate and then, you know, we'll search around, um, reach out to social managers group to see if anybody has a policy on a portable generator, if anybody has a portable generator. So we'll, we'll look into that and see what we can come up with.
Um, what other, um, items were there that you needed to follow up on October Town Meeting? Was there anything?
Let me see here, I'm just, uh, let's see. So actually, there are some items that are on, that were, that were approved at town meeting that we are using the ARPA money for. Um, so Article nine, which is the, um, station battery backups, uh, that we're using ARPA money for. Um, let's see. I think the, I'm sorry?
Not many used ARPA this time.
Let's see, not many, we, we did use a few.
I did have a discussion with Chief Mix today, um, and, um, the motorcycle, he told me that the one that we have is coming to the end of its useful life. And previously we had had a motorcycle donated, but he does not believe that the donor um, is in a position to, um, do something similar at this point. And he told me it gets quite a bit of mileage.
Yeah, I guess our current one is a 2016.
So, you know, that isn't something necessarily with competing demands at a town meeting, budgetary wise, that we necessarily could make a case for. But if it is eligible for us to be spending the ARPA money on, you know, but we already voted to do it, but I mean, I think it makes sense.
So Article 14, which is the conservation properties, uh, that is in the works. Uh, we've got town council working on it. The conservation agent is taking the lead on this.
Is that the one contiguous to Burridge?
Uh, no, this is Article 97, which is all the different, cleaning up the properties. So that is in the works. Um, you know, town council is working on that. And again, our conservation agent is taking the lead on this where they can pay more attention to it, um, on a daily basis than I can. Um, so that is in the works. Let's see, uh, conservation funds, the easement that the board signed at the, um, what was it? The?
1139?
Next to the fire station.
1139, yeah. So that's all set. The, um, owner of the property has the copy of that. We have a copy of it, so that's already been, um?
Where are we on the Hubble property acquisition?
So the Hubble property, we're actually waiting on the Hubble attorneys to send the purchase and sale. Um, I did reach out to them, um, and to find out where they are in that. And they were going to reach out, their agent was going to reach out to the Hubble attorneys. It makes more sense for the Hubble legal department to draft the purchase and sale rather than us spending the money to draft the purchase and sale.
But we have an agreement in principle, right? We, like, they're not going to come back with a different price or something?
Not that I'm aware of, no, no. We're, we're just, I don't know what the holdup is, but I did reach out to them. So we're waiting on just the purchase and sale documents. Um, so that's where we are with the, with the Hubble property. But again, you know, moving forward on that. Let's see, what else do we have?
The transfer station has been restored.
All the positions have been restored. All the union positions are restored, so everybody's back to their full-time hours, which is great. Um, transfer station is now back open on Sundays, which we've heard a lot of positive about, people are very happy about. Um, it's open. Uh, let's see, the?
I, I'm personally happy about it. I love going to the transfer station on Sundays. Do you? Yeah.
My sister goes on Sunday, though. She's happy.
Yeah, so, you know, that's where we are with that right now. Um, so Article 18, which is regarding the Plymouth County ARPA, um, I mean, I have some good news I was going to share in my town administrator report, Um, I mean, I have some good news I was gonna share in my town administrator report, but I can share it right now. So the catch basin repair and rebuilds, the 50,000 was approved.
Awesome.
Um, the Class 5 ambulance for the fire department was approved, 75,000. Um, we have the Pratt Place Construction, 727,000 was approved. Um, we're basically, um, we're gonna, we are, I'm working with Plymouth County to, Matt Henley, to schedule a date when they can bring the checks. The food pantry is in Level 3 review, so it is with the treasurer of Plymouth County. So I'm keeping my fingers crossed that we're gonna get good news on that any day now. That would be 125,000 for the food pantry for upgrades and repairs, landscaping so that they can make it a little bit more private. Um, so waiting on that. And we actually do have two additional applications in there, um, in case they get some extra money for, to update the AED defibrillators for the fire station.
Okay.
And for help with the senior center for their enrollment with Medicare, um, with ours. But that's on a reimbursable basis, so basically we have to, um, log all of the hour, extra hours that Mary Collins and her staff are using to help people with Medicare. And next year, we would, we would, um, apply for reimbursement. So that's a long.
How much money is that?
$43,000.
Oh, boy.
For that. And the, um, AED defibrillators were about 17,000. So we have those extra applications in there. It does exceed our allotment, but in case there's money that comes through that has not been obligated by other communities, our applications are in there.
They said that some communities had not used all of their money.
Yeah, so I made sure we got those applications in.
So.
Um, so, uh, that, you know, that, those are being worked on. Um, so social attack, we talked about that tonight.
Okay.
And that, that's basically everything from, uh, the Town Meeting, um, of where we are. And, you know, happy that everything went the way it did. Uh, all the unpaid bills are, are paid. Um, Lynn generated the warrant for that, so we're getting caught up on those. So we're in a very good place right now for, um, follow ups as far as the, um, Town Meeting, October, especially Town Meeting, why?
Okay, all right, great. Did anybody have any questions about October? Because we're moving on to May, as crazy as that sounds, but we are. Okay, so May 2025 timeline. I dig your little checklist, Ms. McDowell, amazing, um, with deadlines and a project plan of roles and responsibilities, which all looks quite amazing. Um, so.
Lynn did this, you say?
Oh. Um, so is there, Ms. McDowell, did you wanna walk us through this at all, or?
Sure.
And did you already send out that memo to everybody with the deadline, or was that a proposed memo? All right, that's what I thought, okay.
That was till January.
That's what I thought, but then I thought I was misreading it, so.
This is pretty similar to what I did for both May and October. Um, there's just some additions, morally, mostly because I was still trying to figure out everything I needed to do. And it's probably more detailed than it needs to be, but it kinda keeps me on track of I missed something, I know where it needs to go.
Yep.
So start in January with the memo and introducing Town Meeting and just some of the basics, um, housekeeping I need to set up for what I need to present going forward. And any reminders, we don't forget them, including save the date to people who are invited to the meeting. And then going into February, um, receiving the articles and starting to log them and track them, so I know who I need to follow up with. Um, anybody who is sending me a placeholder, so I can know the difference between the article and placeholder and who I need to follow up with. Um, and then reaching out to the school to book what we need to get done. Making sure that we have everything on the agenda for going forward with Town Meeting, uh, scheduling a wage and personnel meeting to follow up anything that's going to affect the wage and personnel bylaw, um, because that was missed unfortunately one time. And then, you know, how many binders I need, who's getting them, um, making sure we have all the unpaid bills. So that's, um, so February is pretty busy, scheduling, um, scheduling cables to show what we have that we need from them. And then going into March, it's mostly, um, confirming everything that we have, making sure that I have final copies, letting people know that they're past the deadline, you have to wait, um, scheduling anything external still with the school, um, forwarding draft to the town clerk for her review, forwarding it to town council for her review, um, setting up motions and meeting with, um, the town clerk to review the motions before we finish.
Oh, okay. So, thank you, because that just actually triggered something that I had wanted to talk about. So speaking of motions, I, after every Town Meeting, I kind of think, like, what could we have done better? I know you guys do too, or at least I assume you do, but I, I do. And I always think, what, what could we, what could we have done better? Now, if you will recall at, um, in 2020, um, at the beginning of COVID, for the sake of expediency, um, we began to have our town, um, town moderator making the motions. And don't get me wrong, in some ways, it's been amazing, because it actually has really shortened the meetings, because people who were maybe potentially prone to pontificate aren't up at the mic. So that's been wonderful in a lot of ways. Um, however, what I do think is missing, and I think what we need to think about for this next Town Meeting is perhaps talking to our town moderator about, I don't wanna call it a hybrid method, but there are some articles that need to be fleshed out more than others. See, you know, if it's like an unpaid bills, okay, but nobody's gonna really have many questions about that, it's gonna pass, whatever. But there were some articles, um, that I think really, um, we did a disservice to people that were at the meeting by not having an expert get up preemptively and talk about the article they had put together, what it meant, what the intention was, et cetera, et cetera. Uh, there were probably three or four that I can think of off of the top of my head that really would have benefited from that kind of a discussion. Um, because I think what happens is, not everybody has time in advance of the Town Meeting to read the articles. Um, and, and they may not even know where to find them, even if they wanted to. Um, so, um, I, you know, so a lot, for some people, the first that they're seeing it is sitting down at Town Meeting, trying to muddle their way through this, you know, this, uh, warrant, which, you know, you need a decoder ring for. And so it may be that you're there for one article or another article, and then you kind of read through and you go, wait a minute, I think this article is saying X, Y, or Z, when it really isn't saying that at all. Um, but you're new, or you don't know, or you don't have the benefit of, you know, knowing what the background is. And I think we did a disservice by not having, you know, the, for instance, I thought some of the conservation articles, it was great that Dave Mansfield immediately got up and explained what, that's what I'm talking about, is sure, have Sean read it, but then if there's an expert in house, have that person get up. And, and it doesn't have to be for every single article, but for the ones that are a little meatier, or that maybe they're not quite as cut and dry, or like the average person isn't gonna be like, oh, I know exactly what they're talking about. I think we just need to do a little bit better on that. Um, so I don't know what you guys think about that, but I.
So you're saying Sean should read it, but then an expert should?
Not in every case, but like, say, like, the Dave Mansfield ones, or.
Right, like that one went.
Say, like, if there was, like, something, um, you know, like a planning one that I, you know, like, yeah, yes, because, uh.
Well, we've talked about that before. We should have information, and people need to understand what the bylaw is actually doing.
Yes.
The why of it.
Because I think, you know, people are like, wait a minute, this looks like a huge change, I feel suspicious, I don't know what's going on. And, you know, they haven't gone, you know, yes, there's, yes, the plan.
Well, we're reading seven pages of bylaw changes, and you, people are just seeing it for the first time.
Yes. It's, it's a lot, it's a lot. So I, I think, I, um, I'm thinking, like, conservation, planning, like, those are the types of ones that, and I'm sure that if I talk to the chairs, that they'd be like, oh, yeah, all right, yeah, we'll get up, um, like I said, Dave Mansfield got up. Um, you know, like, for instance, Joe, if you had something on, say, the High Street Park Committee, you know, that, like, you've been doing all kinds of work on this, you know? It might need a little bit of an explanation that, you know, it, it's, nothing against Sean, it's just he's not the one in the committee, so we just need to flush it out. That's kinda what I'm thinking.
It's a good idea. I mean, back in the day, unless we're doing it in, like, a, a different way, but I remember we used to do mock Town Meetings right before, and we used to coordinate and try to work through some of that stuff.
Yes.
It might be worthwhile to bring something like that back, to see if we can do some precoordination before Town Meeting.
I, we'd been doing the mock, but the last time Sean couldn't make it, and honestly, it's really not much of a mock, because it's just Sean.
Well, that's the thing.
So I, yeah.
Back in the day, we had everybody here, they presented their articles, we talked it out.
Yes.
Like, now, it's, it's, that's why I'm saying, like, I'm, even if we do it, it's not what it was.
No, it isn't.
It's much more streamlined, so. Um, maybe we'd run one of those, and just.
I like that idea. So Lynn, does that, I just wanted to, I didn't mean to go off, you know, script here, but, um, but it did trigger me, because I thought, well, if we're gonna, because I was reading, we're doing the mock thing, we need to maybe bring it, you know, that would be the point we would say, like, hey, we looked through the articles and we think this is a little meaty and might need a little more explanation. Mr. Mansfield, or TJ Roffey from, you know, Conservation, or like Border Health, could you come and could you, you know, have somebody be boots on the ground and explain it? Uh, because, because there were several times during Town Meeting when Sean's like, Ms. Cameron, I'm like, this isn't my article, like, I know about it only because I've read it and I've talked to somebody about it, but like, I didn't propose this, and I'm definitely not the expert on this particular thing.
Oh, yeah, I think definitely, make sure people, um, basically, anybody who submits an article, we can make sure that they all understand that if you're submitting the article, you need to make sure that you're at Town Meeting in case there's a question, and you can stand up and you can explain and answer the questions.
Or if you can't be there, you've got a proxy there.
You've got some, a representative there who can talk about the article and, and explain it and answer any questions.
So maybe can you put that into your little memo?
So I can also invite them to, um.
That's what Joe was saying.
If you go back to the way, the way it was back in the day, it was like true, like, walkthrough.
Yeah, you really, kinda, everybody kinda knew what was gonna be discussed. Obviously, you didn't know how people were gonna react at Town Meeting, but, but you knew what the articles were, because, you know, everybody was talking about them at the, at the dry run, so.
Okay, yeah.
Okay. Um, all right, uh, I'm sorry to so rudely interrupt you. So you were in, you were at the mock meeting.
Yeah. Um, so it's May, and then for May, it's also tied into the Town Annual Report, which is my other torture. So that'll also be coming, we'll make sure that's there. And then just everything I need to do that day for setting up. And then afterwards, just all the cleanup that goes to bed and what, what to be expected.
Uh, thank you for including the senior transportation and the childcare. I think, um, it's important, you know, for us to have a good cross section of everybody. And if people have difficulty getting there because of either childcare or because they don't feel comfortable driving at night.
I have a point to make.
Yeah.
Um, I had a discussion, a local business gentleman was upset about the, um, the NIPS. The NIPS is gonna lose its job because the NIPS gave me a ration about the fact that, um, these meetings are inconvenient, they are not scheduled for the working person.
The Town Meeting.
Not a lot of people can go to them, blah, blah. And I just wanted to make the point that, first of all, we can't please everybody. We need to set these meetings, we, we, I think we do a good job of trying to accommodate a wide variety of people coming into these meetings. And I, I think that people need to realize that we're volunteers ourselves, we're not getting paid to do this. So we are also having to work this into our lives. My point is, is that they need to come to Town Meeting. They need to be educated, they need to come to Town Meeting.
I do struggle with that, uh, you know, I, I, I agree with everything you just said, but I, I struggle with, you know, in this fast paced world where everybody's got all these competing demands and, you know, and we've all been through it, raising, raising our kids and, you know, you don't, you're every which way but loose. But, um, you know, I, I struggle with, and, and I remember when I used to commute from Boston, thinking, who the hell would schedule a meeting at this time of the day? Like, don't they know people have to work and they're gonna hit traffic, you know, going southbound? And, you know, I'd be like, calling my husband, like, oh my God, I'm gonna be 15 minutes late, where are you, where are you, you know? So I get it. Um, and, and I've thought about, you know, would a Saturday be better? But then you've got.
But then you got people.
You've got the, you've got people working, you've got the softball, the sports, you know? Um, and I mean, we did end up bringing the time to 6:30, I think that did help a little bit.
I think it helped a little bit.
That did help a little bit. Um, you know, I, I, I don't know, I mean, I don't know how.
How the time could we possibly schedule?
Uh, see, now, the days, not that we can't change this, but the days are, um, are in our bylaws. You know, the first Monday of May, the da, 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 da. So we can certainly change it. Um, I don't know, Lisa, do you have any thoughts on how we could study? I mean, obviously, you can't please all the people all the time. And, um, and I do think we've been doing a fairly reasonably good job of, um, getting the message out there. We've got the sandwich boards, you're doing the Whitman Hansen Express, you're doing the town sign, you're updating the website. I mean, I, I, you know, short of sending a herald to everybody's, you know, home address, I don't know what else we could do. Um, but, um, and I think we even did stuff through the schools and the senior center, like, just letting everybody know.
I don't know why anybody, there, there was.
You know?
I don't think it's a matter of not knowing, it's just a matter of it's inconvenient.
I mean, what, can we?
We can't.
Can we do a survey or something? But I, I mean, I don't even know, then people, you know, I'm not, I'm not really sure, um, you know? This is a dilemma, right? Because we bemoan the fact that we don't have enough engaged people, right? We've got, we, we, every meeting, we read all these openings. Um, and we don't have people signing up for these committee openings. Uh, we barely make a quorum. Um, sometimes at the town, when we've got town elections, it's pitiful, you know, the number of people that are, that are coming. It's, it's honestly really disheartening. Um, you know, when it's, like, you're choosing who's gonna be representing you in different capacities. Um, so I don't know if it's, we're just like a microcosm of a bigger cultural problem. Um, I suspect that's what it is, but, but I'm more than, like, if you think we could do a, um, some kind of a survey, or, I don't know, what do you, what do you think?
Well, we, we are working with Bridgewater to do a survey, so we can certainly have that, add that in a question.
Just throw that in there, yeah.
We can throw that in there, but, I mean, realistically, like Ian said, you can't please everybody. We do everything we can to get, you know, give people plenty of notice of when Town Meeting is going, is. Um, and, you know, giving them plenty of notice would allow them to, to schedule and, and plan, just like you plan a vacation.
So he's saying he works, so he can't come.
Well, he works, so he can't come, but he was very passionate about the article, and she should have taken, I mean.
So, which was the citizens petition, by the way, so.
But I give up, I give up, you know, clients to go to Town Meeting, I, I cancel things to come to these meetings, it's, you know.
It's a matter of priorities.
It's a matter of priorities, exactly.
Yeah.
I mean, you can look at changing your government. To a council type of government, where people elect counselor, you know, representative type of government, like Bridgewater has. Then, you know what I mean, they, they have a representative there, so.
I think so. I think when you get into that type of government, they're, they're paid positions.
I mean, it could probably die if we went to that, I don't know. I like the idea.
I like the old Town Meeting.
I, I do. I mean, it's on Facebook, it, it's on social media, we know, because people talk about it all the time, so plenty of people know about it. And it's just like anything else in your life that you have to plan for. Oh, I'm gonna have surgery, I've gotta have somebody bring me, I've gotta have somebody pick me up. You have to, you, you plan for all these things. You can say, well, I'm working, so I can't have.
I know, I just, I just think it's always good to be a little bit introspective and say, is there something we could do better? Is there something, anything we could do better? You know, is there anything we could change that would, you know, um, that would have a better result? I don't, and then the answer might be no.
Yeah, we, but we can definitely have Bridgewater State include that question, you know, as part of the survey. You know, what can we do better for Town Meeting to get the information out there, make it more convenient, you know, what, what can we do? So we can definitely put that question.
I think we did kinda mention that to her when we were talking to her about it, so.
Yeah, yeah.
Mister, I, I don't know that we really wanna go that way, but is Zoom another option?
Like, having a Zoom option so that people that are, who are working can listen in to them? I'm not saying it's the right answer.
I'm not saying yes or no to this, but first of all, I'm not even sure if it's permitted. But even if it were permitted, let me tell you, my experience when we went into COVID lockdown and I had the pleasure of doing the first Zoom select board meeting, let me just say it became suddenly X-rated and it was not of my doing.
Yes.
So, um, so I would very strongly suggest that might not be a path we want to take.
During COVID, we just get it spaced.
We, we, so for COVID, then we were like, oh, we've got to get secure permissions and da-da-da-da. But nobody really knew how to do that at that point. We were very naive and we thought, oh, only permitted people who were going to say the right thing. And we were like, what is happening right now? Yes, it was, I don't want to relive it anyway. Um, so that was, um, so that was an experience. So I'm not sure we want to repeat that.
And I'm not even saying it's a good option, but it could be an option that maybe.
No, I've had people say, oh, can I zoom into town meeting? And it's like, well, no, there's a, you know, like, there's a check-in process. You have to validate that you're, you live in town, that you, you know, you're a registered voter, et cetera, et cetera. Um, and also who the heck would, even if that was possible, which I don't think it is, but, um, who would monitor that? And God knows, we have difficulty just with one speaker at a town meeting. I don't even want to think about it exponentially. So I like your thought process, but a retro that would work.
No, I agree.
Um, all right.
That was the answer.
Um, anything else on the May town, um, town meeting timeline? Okay, excellent job. Um, potential May town meeting, um, articles, Ms. Green.
Okay, so we're already collecting articles. Um, so one is going to be the deed to convey parcel 67-17 to the Water Commission Water Department. So that's coming from the water. And I believe that's Article 97, which has been in the works. Um, it is with, um, it was with Representative Josh Cutler in his office, but we've needed to resubmit it to Senator Brady's office. So his office has it and it's going to go through the process now.
Is this the piece of property that was conservation property, but then water needed it and?
Yes.
Okay, all right, okay.
Yeah, so we're, we're putting that on just hopefully it'll, and we'll get there. Um, update bylaws to increase licensing fees. Um, Wiki Store Lot 308, um, Maquon Street.
I'm sorry. Ms. Green, can we, so licensing fees, yes, understood. Um, have we compared other fees?
Which you had a whole.
Yes, when, yep.
Okay, not just licensing, though, like, um.
I spoke with the fire chief earlier. He is, would like to.
Our fire chief's here. Yeah. So.
He had a couple he wanted to.
Okay. All right, that's why I mentioned it because I thought, I thought, you know, the building inspector had mentioned and you had some, because I'm just not sure we're competitive with other towns and God knows, we're not in the financial shape to be not competitive with other towns, so. Okay, cool. And I don't know if you want to similarly, Lisa, reach out to Carrie Glass, to Frank Skellinger in Conservation, you know, Border Health. I think this should be all hands on deck. Everybody taking a look and doing a competitive analysis. Are we with the program here?
Yes. Yeah, we're definitely going to be looking at that for the next meeting. Um, 308 Maquon Street, that is proposed by the Conservation Commission. Um, Wiki, the Wiki Store Lot.
It's Wilkie.
Oh, Wilkie.
Where is that? 308.
Where is it?
Wilkie Way.
No, Wilkie Store.
Maquon Street.
Wilkie Store Lot.
Wilkie Store Lot.
And the assessor's map, 70 Lot 37.
308 Maquon Street? Do you know where it is? You're in Conservation. Where are you guys talking about?
I'm not sure where that one is.
All right, all right. Well, more to come on that, okay.
Um, so then we have 410 Woodbine Ave, the easement. And that, um, that is that property that encroaches on town property about five feet. So the, the town was moving to rectify this a few years back when the bank owned it. The town was going to grant an easement. Um, but something went, went down the, went down the tubes and the property ended up being purchased through cash, so.
Right, but then, and I may have this wrong. You can educate me on this. I, so we had some, through some series of missteps, apparently, we had this property built on town property. Unfortunate. Then we were going to try to rectify it with an easement. I think we were even actually asking for some type of remuneration or we were going to ask for some type of remuneration because they're taking our property and they're using it. Um, and we need to get paid for it. Um, I'm not sure where that, that stands now, but I heard, and I'm not sure that this is true, that the individuals who bought this property actually applied to ZBA to put a second floor on the property, which would seem to me as though it's even further encroaching on our property. Um, and that we granted it. And I don't want to, I don't want to, um, second guess, but I just was sort of like, what? How, how could we make a bad thing even worse? And it seemed like letting people build up on something that was already a mistake in an easement was, it was mind-boggling. And I'm not on ZBA and I don't want to second guess what you guys are doing, but.
So the, the current footprint of the building was established, at least as best as we can tell by the 1970s.
Yeah.
So this encroachment has existed for a very extended period.
Since the jump, yeah.
Yeah, it's been, it may have even been there before then, but the last substantial work on the property appears to have been done in the 70s. They didn't add a second floor. The property in its existing configuration had an in-law apartment on the property that was formerly permitted under the town's bylaw. And what happened was that when the property went out of its original ownership into Fannie Mae, uh, who was the, which was the entity that the town meeting board originally authorized extending an easement to, it lost that status. And so part of the action against the property owners was that they had a property with an in-law apartment and the town's bylaw required it to be owner occupied, to be permitted as an in-law apartment.
Okay.
They purchased the property as housing for a disabled adult child and they intend to reside in it periodically or have someone there at some point in time as in the in-law apartment.
Okay.
So the application was just to regularize the existing configuration of the building. It didn't involve any internal remodeling.
Okay, and are we getting any remuneration?
So.
Not for that.
Not for that. I'm just saying for the easement itself.
No, I mean, my communications with Ms. Green have just been about whether we're going to put it on the warrant article. The original warrant article that was voted at town meeting expressly says to grant an easement to Fannie Mae, not to the owner of the property or to a successive purchaser. So it's our opinion that, that warrant article should go back on for town meeting for a vote to see if the town wants to do that. And it would authorize the board to enter into negotiations to try to consummate an agreement that would result in that. So.
Okay.
It's neither, I think, it's not on the table until the vote happens to authorize you to go forward and then we would go from there.
Yeah, the only reason I ask is because you could see how this would be a slippery slope, right? I mean, you know, you could have people willy-nilly, just, oh, whoops, you know, I built a little bit on, you know, town property. And then the town's not getting any money for it. And we, and I don't know, I rustily recall, and it was probably like 10 years ago, it was before I was on the select board, but there was definitely a meeting at, there was a vote at town meeting about something similar. The person hadn't built, but they needed an easement on, on town property. Um, so maybe we could go back and take a look. D. Alexander in the assessor's office probably would have some information about that.
So there's no, no building of a second floor. It's already there.
That's great.
Thank you. That is exactly what I was going to say.
Okay, thank you.
But a lot more.
Can we just back, I was going to say, that Wilkie Store, I actually remember that place. It's right, see Crescent?
Yeah.
It's that, it's that on the, it burned down years ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah.
So is that an important property for you guys or?
Yeah, I mean, it's, yes.
Okay, all right.
I mean, it's, it's, it's right along the water than the.
Okay, all right. Um, all right, well then.
I'm not sure what's, what's involved with, with acquiring it, but.
Oh, nothing. You know how typically if there's a town-owned property, it gets shopped around to all the different departments? Do you have any reason you might need to keep it? Water, conservation, blah, blah, blah. So probably, I'm guessing your conservation agent said, yeah, it's contiguous to water. Well, Anne showed me and it's right on the lawn.
As a matter of fact, a man used to live there. My son knows all about that property. They used to swim across Maquon Pond to talk to that guy. I just remember, there's a story there. There's a story.
Um, okay. Um, all right, that brings us to cannabis control additional licensing. Um, we had, um, uh, Town Council and Mr. DePrayus, um, at our last meeting telling us that the state has changed the rules of engagement and our current, um, license and agreement are not in compliance as a result, even though they were in compliance when we originally signed them. Um, so, okay. Um, and then, um, a question for you. Um, I know that, um, we've had, uh, some discussion about, um, positions that might be appointed versus elected. Um, and, um, there may be somebody in town hall who's resigning, uh, that's an elected position and whether that should be made an appointed position because some of these positions really require a high level of expertise. And one does not want to risk that we are going to have somebody run for election for this particular role that doesn't have any background or knowledge or what have you. Um, so, um, I just throw that out there as something to think about.
Something to chew on.
Yeah, something to chew, exactly, to chew on.
Is that something we, we have the ability?
We would put it on the town meeting warrant and then, um, then the voters would decide. Um, years ago, something similar happened with the Highway Surveyor. That used to be, um, an elected position. And again, with stormwater management and all the expertise that you need to have in that position, um, at the time, uh, the select board said, does this make sense? Yeah, it shouldn't be a popularity. It should be somebody who's got the actual qualification. The other thing you need.
It should be somebody that lives in town and has an interest in the town, not somebody that lives somewhere else.
Well, and the, but the other thing you need to think about is if it's an elected position, you're very limited if there are performance issues as to what you can do. Um, you really can't do much at all, um, because they're not reporting to anybody. And I'm not suggesting that that even has to be a position that reports to you or to the select board. Like, sometimes these positions would report to a town moderator, you know, I, whatever, you know, or be appointed by the town moderator, I should say. Um, so, um, just if that's something we could just take a look at.
Mm-hmm, oh, absolutely.
Okay. Um, anything else that anybody had bubbling that they thought we should potentially, um, talk about? Obviously, we are, you know, potentially looking at an override, but we're not there yet, so. But it's, it's in the distance, in the horizon. Um, at least a discussion about it. Um, anything else? Nope? Okay.
Well, actually, the only other one would be the, um, our, um, general bylaws that, um, are codified right now through general code. So that will need to go to town meeting, um, for a vote to adopt the bylaw, the new bylaws, um, that would, uh, that are codified and that would be available all online. Of course, we still have.
Do you think between now and May? I just want you to think about all the things we're probably going to have on our plate in May. Um, and, um, since we already know we've got cannabis control stuff, um, we've got, um, potential override. I think at some point you read, reach a point of saturation, at which point people just are not going to be able to properly focus and absorb everything, including myself. Um, I'm wondering, do you feel that the general bylaws are best suited for the May town meeting? Or is it something that we potentially could look at doing in October, which would give more time to educate, share, get input, da-da-da?
We could absolutely do it in October, absolutely. I mean, it's a matter of because, uh, the general code project included a legal analysis of the bylaws and, um, basically rewording without changing the substance. So, you know, they, they did a lot of that. So we all have the binders.
Yes.
And it's going through each and every one and comparing. And it's, it's, it's a lot of work, so it may, we may need that time to bring it forward in October.
Are we going to convene the bylaw committee? Although I know we're not changing the bylaws. It's, it's syncing them up with the state bylaws, making sure we're cross-referencing the right things, all of that type of thing, like ticking and tying, I would say. Um, were you thinking that you might get the bylaw committee?
We, we may want to get a meeting together, you know, some meetings together so that they could, you know, they can look at the new bylaws, you know, as the, the new, I mean, they're not new bylaws, they're just newly codified.
Yeah.
Take the old bylaws, find them and compare the language, things like that. Um, yeah, again, it's, it's going to be a tedious task. It's going to take a lot. I, I actually worked on this in Whitman and know what is, what's required for it, so.
I mean, I'm looking forward to it. It's awful right now because you're looking at multiple PDFs. You've got a cross ref, I mean, it's like, it's absolute insanity trying to find.
It's like looking at a, you know, 2,000-pound, 2,000-piece mini jigsaw puzzle.
I thought we had a consultant working on it.
We did, that's, so the consultant took the first pass. Now we've got to go back and kind of review their work.
Yeah, well, we have to, yeah, it's in our court now.
Yeah. So, okay. Um, well, think about whether, whether that's the right timing for that. We'll defer to you on that. Um, that brings us to surplus equipment with the Highway Department, Ms. Green.
Okay, so the Highway Department has a, so they have some equipment that they like to be deemed surplus. Um, do we have a list on that?
Yes, what, I have it right here. Um, vehicle one, 2006 Ford F-350 Super Duty utility body, red. And vehicle two, 2014 Ford F-150, black. Um, and it's got the VIN numbers. Um, so he, uh, this is our, our new highway director. Good morning, this is a formal request for the select board to declare the two out-of-service vehicles at the Highway Department as surplus. Um, so they're already out of service, so I will entertain a motion.
So move. Second.
On favor?
Right.
Okay, great. Um, all right, then that brings us to private way plow list, Ms. Green.
All right, this is the usual yearly task for the select board to approve the private way plow list. You took my thing. Oh, we're doing this. My folder that had the Marini.
Well, we did, remember a couple that we made public, so, yeah.
Yeah, some of those have been.
Well, look at you, putting a positive spin on the list. The list is getting smaller because we've made a couple of roads public.
Did we, do we have more private roads or is this the same other?
No, it's the same. It's the same, yes.
It's something that's done every year that, that basically just, just, um, gives the Highway Department permission to plow the private roads so that police and fire, first responders can get access to any of the residents on those roads.
But we did remove gray lane, blah, blah, blah.
Yes, those are now public ways, yes.
Okay.
I will ask my question that I asked every year. Pine Grove Colony is, is a multiple roads. It's, it's, it's multiple ways, right? I mean, it's, but I don't think anybody knows it as Pine Grove Colony, but we understand what you're getting at, but, you know what I mean?
Yeah, it is an odd verbiage. I, I've never heard of it even referred to that way. You're getting plowed though, right?
We aren't getting.
Okay, all right.
That's what I'm saying. Really, people understand what it means, but it's not a way. It's a, it's a group of six roads or something.
Yeah, that is a little weird. And I know you guys inherited this, it, but it's, it's weird, weird to call it that because I, I don't even know where that comes from.
Yeah, so I can, um, I can ask Carol if she has any history on it. I mean, because if, I mean, they could certainly list out the roads.
I would probably suggest.
Instead of having it grouped into one little neighborhood.
I think so for clarity, yeah.
Okay, yeah, absolutely.
Um, do you, do you know them off the top of your head or?
There's Oak Street, there's Pine Street, there's West Street.
Yeah.
I was going to say.
Can you send us a email with those roads?
Probably enough, there's a second Park Street.
All right, well, we will, um, that is strange. Um, okay, so, um, we will make a motion contingent upon, um, Pine Grove Colony being specified and broken down. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve the private way plow list of 2025.
Second.
Okay, on favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Thanks. Contended upon the little tweak. You have asked that before. Déjà vu. Yes. Um, okay. And, uh, DPU annual reporting requirement. Ms. Green.
Uh, so this, actually, this is connected to the Hanson Community Power program that the town, um, is now, now has that is actually being quite successful with saving people money on their electric bills. However, there's a new requirement now that towns have to have, uh, on staff, a customer support person for this community power.
When, when did this happen?
Yeah, exactly.
Can't even make this stuff up.
Yeah.
A full-time staffer or just?
No, it doesn't, it doesn't specify, um, you know, just someone on staff that they, that can be, that can be, uh, deemed their customer support for Hanson Community Power. I'm not really sure what that entails. We don't have a job description or anything.
What does that entail? Because really, if somebody's got a problem with their bill, aren't they gonna call their provider, whoever bills them?
You'd think that they would call National Grid.
Like, what, what is it that the town, I, this was sold to us as like, you vote to do it and we do the rest. Um, so-
Slippery slope coming into my head every single meeting.
Cause I probably say it fifteen times every meeting.
No, but this is a slippery slope. It's like, well, we'll do it. It won't cost anything. But oh, by the way, you need to hire this person to, to be answering your phone. Maybe answer a phone once a year.
Well, yeah, I mean, they're just saying that we must list a municipal contact liaison as well as a municipal contact for customer support. Now, I did, I did, again, I, um, pushed back on this a little bit, that, you know, we're a town of limited resources and our office is only, you know, two full-time and one part-time person. But they are saying this is something that the DPU is requiring.
Did they give you a, did they give you a reference?
Yeah, exactly. When did this become effective?
Uh, let's see. It, it doesn't say when. Um, it just says that we are reaching out with an update to file your aggregation programs in your report with the Department of Public Utilities. Each year, we submit a report on how the programs served the community during the previous year. And as a part of the report, we must list. So I, I don't know where it came up with, with, you know, where, where it came from or anything. Um, but again, I'm not sure what's, what's enta- what entails, like as far as customer support.
Well, I mean, de facto, you were doing that. Our office was doing that when it initially rolled out.
Right.
Are they just looking for us to name you?
I, I gather, but you know, it would be good if we knew more of what was gonna be expected because I don't want our office to become a complaint department. You know, I can't get through to Direct Energy. I can't get through to National Grid, so I'm calling you. I, I don't want those people to think that-
We can't do anything.
If they can't, you know, they can't get through to these people, now they're gonna call us. And, and we're not gonna be able to solve the problem that they have.
Yeah, well, I think it effectively changes your job description too. I mean, I would push back by just simply saying, show, because all the, all this is saying here is that we need to do this for their report to the DPU. I would say, where's the, where's the reference either in the, the DPU guidelines or within the agreement that we had made that we would do this? Because otherwise, I would list Rachel Ferdinand at seven seven four eight four zero as the person that we're gonna be contacting.
Yeah, yeah.
So- Yeah, tell them we need the regulation. We need the citation.
Got it.
We even have her number.
Yeah, I didn't want to say the whole thing, discuss. But, I mean, honestly, I, I, I think it's, that's an unfunded mandate that we do not have.
Exactly.
And not for nothing, I, unless they said that we signed this agreement saying it was gonna happen, just, they can ask all day long. We'll just list their own employees.
Yeah.
Yeah.
In addition to the person we need to do for the Cannabis Control Commission to make the site user-friendly and redesign it and all those things. Apparently, we're just hiring all kinds of extra people with no money from the state.
And, you know, when this came, first came out, we spent a lot of time with people on the phone going over the National Grid bills. Yeah, to understand, you know, you're not being charged twice. You see the delivery. You see the supplier. I, I mean, we spent a, a lot of time with people on the phone.
And does it explain- Did she say it has to be an employee of the town?
No, they don't, they didn't say it has to be an employee of the town.
Okay. Well, so if you get-
I think she said it would be an employee.
Okay. Inquire on the citation and if it doesn't have to be an employee, then I would circle back with the energy committee and see if somebody there is willing to be the point person. If they're not requiring an employee and if it's required.
You're the volunteer mayor.
Oh, I think Ed just said he would be the person. He's on the energy committee. We saw you blink or there was something going on over there.
I love it. You're in charge of everything. You're paid for.
Exactly. CPA, ZBA, what did you?
One told them.
Yeah, I'm kidding. I get in trouble for building, expanding a building and-
Yep, exactly. Um, all right. Just, um, okay. That brings us to October twenty ninth, um, twenty twenty-four minutes. Um, I will entertain a motion to approve.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, great. Um, one-day look-a-ly since eleven thirty twenty-four, Adam Morse, and one twenty, one twelve twenty-five, Leah Gilcoin. I will entertain a motion to approve.
So move. Second.
All in favor? Any burning desire to give us committee updates?
No.
Okay. When is our next Whitman Hanson Regional Agreement Committee meeting?
You know, I, um, the, my, the folder is upstairs. I did, I did attend the, um, regional school committee agreement, agreement committee meeting on, on Wednesday, October twenty-third.
Yep.
Um, there was a, there was a lengthy discussion on, again, transportation, uh, non-mandated transportation. That, that's gonna be a sticking point. Um, we really, we really need it.
Just, just if you could clarify what, um, is the foot here, um, which is that we have Whitman. Uh, currently, the, uh, regional agreement, um, specifies that the, we're charged for busing by-
Miles, by mileage right now. I think what we're charging by, it's being charged by, the formula, they use, the formula they're using is by mileage.
I don't think it is currently by mileage. I think that's what they want to go to.
Okay.
Because it's, we would pay more because all of our students are further away from the school.
And there's no sidewalks.
Yes. Um, and so where we're at with the regional agreement is although it is unfortunate, there are a few, you know, like antiquated schools that are referenced in there, that type of thing. Um, and I think we're supposed to meet again, but it seems like the primary focus of at least the folks from Whitman, um, is to get us to pick up more of the busing, um, bill. Um, however, in order to do that, we'd have to execute an amendment to the agreement. If we don't execute an amendment, then nothing can change. And it cannot be unilaterally changed, unlike the statutory method. Um, there, there is no law that requires that the busing be paid for in this manner. Um, so, um, it's, um, I, it is a contentious discussion. Um, and, uh, that said, is, I mean, I think I know the answer, but I just wanna make sure because I'm gonna be-
You know the answer.
I'm gonna be going there. Um, is there anybody who wants to even consider that proposal?
No.
Okay.
No.
I just need to ask.
I think that's the point, that if, if, if it snows too much and they haven't cleared the sidewalks over there-
Yeah.
They call out school.
Yes.
I mean, no. No.
I just wanna make sure because I'm representing you guys, so I just-
If fewer kids in the school district, no.
It's not required and I-
If you don't have sidewalks, no.
I agree. And the kids have to be bussed. Uh, we don't have, we don't have a choice. Um, I, I wanna say it might be next week, the next meeting.
I, yeah, I'll, um, I will send a, I will look at my notes and, and send out the email when the next meeting is.
We've got a member from FinCom on there and Lisa, uh, but I think there's only three voting members. There's a select board member from Hanson, select board member from Whitman, and then a school committee member, I think. Or maybe from each town. And I think Hillary-
Hillary Nethin and Rosemary Connolly Hill.
Are the school committee members.
Are the school committee representatives.
Um, so it's, um, it's a challenging conversation. Um, so, um, okay. Um, I just needed a sanity check on that. All right. Ms. Green, that brings us to town administrator report.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay. Um, so part of my report actually, um, circles back, uh, to the ARPA money, um, that we, we are awarded. And, um, hopefully in one of our meetings in early December, Plymouth County will be here to present four checks to us for those projects. Um, um, I left a message today for Matt Hanley and hopefully I will hear it back. He actually called me. I, I spoke with him when I was in Las Vegas about, um, the two outstanding, um, ARPA projects, which was the class five ambulance and the food pantry. Um, and also to go over the two applications I put in that actually exceed our allotment. So, uh, we had that conversation. So hopefully I will, um, let everybody know as soon as I hear, um, when, when, hopefully we get approved for the la, the food pantry application and when they will be here to present us with all the checks. Um, and before I left for vacation, um, if, if the board remembers, our natural gas energy contract with Sprague Energy was due to expire. Um, basically, I entered into on behalf of the town a six-month contract at point seven five cents per therm, um, starting in November. The average national ga, gas rate was point seven nine two per therm. And the, the board was not scheduled to meet in order to lock in that rate. So on behalf of the board, I entered into the contract for six months to get us through the winter months. And then, um, at the six months, we can revisit and see where the therm rates are, but at least we're locked in for those, for the winter months, um, in saving the money. And we're gonna be looking at the electricity contract as well. Um, all right. So our town meeting, um, vote to not accept the MBTA community, um, program is now coming to fruition. We were awarded two grants through the one-stop program. We were awarded a grant for three hundred and seven thousand dollars for the Hox Ave ground pollution that was discovered with the first grant. Uh, we were also, uh, awarded a grant of, um, for site readiness for two twelve Industrial Boulevard. The two grants equal two, um, three hundred and thirty-seven thousand dollars, um, of which the state has added language to the grant award letter that states if the community is not compliant with MBTA community statute, an agreement will not be executed, which means we don't get the money.
So in other words, the Commonwealth of Massachusetts is more than willing to let properties continue to be polluted, to try to hold us over a barrel, to, no.
Yeah.
I know.
Welcome to Massachusetts, yeah.
I know. And there's other towns that have joined the bandwagon. And from what I understand, I mean, you've got a bad read. I heard other people that got a really good read on what's been going on. So let's see what happens.
Absolutely. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, we still have the Supreme Court that, that hasn't come out with a decision yet. But for right now, we've been awarded the grants. They, the state is waiting until January one to deem what communities are in compliance or not. Um, so we'd have to wait till January one to see how they deem us. But if we do not get the grant, the very unfortunate part is the pollution that was discovered over at Hox Ave through a grant is now on the town's dime to clean up. Because the pollution that they discovered exceeds the DEP.
They have the money to do it and they're trying to blackmail us. I think that's ridiculous.
We can, we can, we can fight, we can try.
I know.
But I'm saying that we are now on the block.
We can also see if there's some other, other federal money.
Tracy Costa did mention to me that there's possibly another pot of money through DEP that we could look at. Um, but, you know, I don't know, and I don't know what's involved with that, but we will work on that. But it's unfortunate that these two grants here are part of the grants that we will no longer be eligible for, but-
So we add that to the library.
Add that to the library, yeah.
Okay. Well, we can add it all up. It's just not, it's-
No, Joe had wanted to keep a running tally, so I just-
Yeah, you were gonna, I was gonna ask you that anyways. What's our grand total money? I don't wanna put you on the spot. We could, it can wait until whenever.
Well, I, I believe Emily has that.
I don't.
We may not be able to get it. We're not, we don't have blackmail. Yeah, we don't have it right now.
Yeah, don't even worry. It's like, I was gonna ask.
It exceeds, it exceeds two point five million dollars. But with, when you look at the library, that was in the thirty million dollar range.
Yeah.
Um, so it, it's unfortunate. So the highway department is scheduling interviews for the master mechanic position. Uh, we advertised for the position. They did receive some resumes. Um, I'm gonna be meeting with, um, Richard Jasmine next week, um, to go over interview processes and think, because he hasn't done it with municipal government before. Um, so hopefully we'll have a master mechanic onboard, um, by the end of the month or beginning of December. Um, the IT director position, uh, I have that ready to go to reposting. I am, I'm only gonna put this on, uh, MMA and I'm gonna put it in the express. I don't really feel that we need to put it in Indeed because we got so many applications from Indeed from people who are out of state, out of the country. Um, I just feel that we really wanna concentrate on local. So, um, hopefully tomorrow, um, I'm gonna get that on the MMA and, and, um, let people know that the, it's open now that we can move forward with that. Um, and today, I met with our Green Communities representative, um, who came in and did an inspection of our new heat pumps that were installed, the six heat, heat pumps. And because we were able to finish the project and comply with all the final reporting, that does leave us eligible for the spring round for Green Communities. Um, so I do wanna look at the new application to see what type of projects are eligible and then maybe look at some of the other buildings for maybe HVAC or whatever.
The MBTA community thing isn't gonna mess up-
It does not, no.
It doesn't.
It does not impact Green Communities.
Okay.
Yeah, fortunately. So I will start looking at, um, projects for, for Green Communities for some of our other buildings. Uh, applications are due in April and, um, Old Colony Planning Council will help us with that application as well. Um, and the MMA conference registration is now open. So if you'd like to attend, please send an email to Lynn and we will register you. It is no longer at the Sheridan Heinz Convention Center. It's now at the World Convention Center.
Oh, okay.
Um, which is a different location.
Seaport, more Seaport.
Seaport, yes.
Yeah.
Um, but, you know, there is a cost to that. So if you do want us to register, um, and you can't make it, please let us know because if you don't make it, we have to pay the bill. And, you know, we, that's money that we can use in other things. But, um, and that concludes my town administrator report for today.
Can I ask one random question?
Yeah, go for it.
I don't know what made me think of this. Um, and you probably already have it in the works. But, um, we, when we had that, um, that tech, uh, presentation that, that was in here and talked about vulnerabilities, um, is there anything that we can do going into town meeting to fund whatever we need to do to get us going on that or, unless you're already doing it?
Yeah. So actually, we already, we are already doing that. Um, so we have a, um, we're, we're gonna be moving into an agreement with Bridgewater State and they have a cyber monitoring, um, center there. The first year is fifty percent of that is covered by Plymouth County. Um, and so that, it's, it's a very small amount of money. Um, and there's a grant out there that would cover the remaining balance in year two. So I'm gonna be working with Saroja on that application to get that paid for, for this year and for next year. Um, so that will at least cover us until we get our IT director onboard and then they can kinda take the lead on that. So-
Will we still have the, that monitoring service with our IT person?
Oh, yeah. Absolutely, yeah. Absolutely. Yes.
Great. Thank you.
Yep.
Okay. Um, then I will entertain a motion to adjourn to executive session. We will not be returning to open session. Um, executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eight, one, to discuss reputation, character, physical condition or mental health, rather than professional competence of an individual, or discuss the discipline or dismissal of or complaints or charges against a public officer, employee, staff member, or individual enforcement discussions. Executive session pursuant to o, open meeting law, chapter thirty, A, section twenty-one, eight, three, to discuss strategy with respect to collective bargaining or litigation. If an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining or litigating position of the public body and the chair does so declares highway union litigation discussions. Executive session pursuant to open meeting law, chapter thirty-eight, section twenty-one, eight, seven, to review and approve executive session minutes not to be released October twenty-nine, twenty twenty-four. We'll entertain a motion.
Oh, so moved, so.
Okay. What's happening here, people?
All right. Roll call is reading.
Aye.
All right.
Aye.
Okay. We will not be returning to open session.